Good evening, guests. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm Greg Ferris, President and Foreign and ISD Board of Trustees, and I hereby call this Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is now six o'clock PM, and a quorum is present. This meeting is posted in the time and manner required by law. At this time, we're going to take number -- we're going to go into workshop. I don't have my other page, I only brought one.
We're going to go into closed session.
We're going to go into closed session. I don't know the item number, I apologize. And we'll call that closed session starting now at 6:01. We're glad to have you all here tonight, and some special guests we'll recognize here in a little bit. We're going to continue with our meeting at item number three, and we'll have stand and please have our invocation at this time led by Scott Regan.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless us time together tonight as we work for the district's business on behalf of our children, parents, and stakeholders of our beloved district. In Christ Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
And Ms. Regan will lead us in our places.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Moving on to item number four, issue certificate elections to newly elected board members. This time, I'd like to ask Ms. Dobbs and Mr. Johnson to please move down to the front.
I, Chad Johnson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of the Forney ISD Board of Trustee of the State of Texas.
The Forney ISD Board of Trustees of the State of Texas.
And will do to the best of my ability
And will do to the best of my ability.
Preserve
Preserve.
Protect
Protect.
And defend
And defend.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to Ms. Dobbs and Mr. Johnson. Moving on to item number five, reorganization of the Board of Trustees. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Justin Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. It's the one time I get to actually run the meeting here, so I'm pretty excited about this every year, but now we are here to reorganize our Board of Trustees, and at this time, I would entertain any nominations for board officers.
I make the motion to nominate Greg Ferris for School Board President, Chad Johnson for School Board Vice President, and Becky Dobbs for School Board Secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second for the nomination of Greg Ferris as President, Chad Johnson as Vice President, and Becky Dobbs as Secretary?
Secretary.
Ms. Green is the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the nomination passes.
I appreciate your patience.
Congratulations, Mr. Greg Ferris, Board President, Chad Johnson, Vice President, and Becky Dobbs
We're getting through some of those formalities. On behalf of all the officers, I want to thank you for your endorsement of confidence
as our new Secretary.
in us and in your support, and we look forward to continuing to serve as a teammate for
Congratulations to you all.
and putting our number one first, and that is our students of our district.
At this time, I will turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Ferris.
So thank you all for your support. We'll move on now to seven. I think they want to take a photo. Item seven is recognition of students.
Photo?
At this time, North Forney High School Student Council, and we're going to call to the microphone,
I'm sorry.
Dr. Judy Weber.
Excited to still have student recognitions going on even though we've kind of completed our school year, and this is a really, really exciting one. So this is recognize our North Forney Student Council, and I've got a little bit of information to share with you here. North Forney SUCO received the following awards at the Texas Association of Student Councils. Outstanding Student Council Distinction, Pride and Patriotism Distinction, Drugs, Alcohol Safety and Health Issues Distinction, Energy and the Environment Distinction, Community Service Distinction, and a Sweepstakes Council, the highest award at the state level. In addition, North Forney High School Student Council and the representatives have been elected -- oh, Michelle Guthu has been elected President of the TASC District Three for the 2022-23 school year. At the national level, North Forney Student Council has been recognized as the 2022 National Gold Council of Excellence by the National Student Council. This is the highest council honor awarded at the national level, so a lot to be proud of. Let's give it up for our North Forney Student Council. We have their sponsor with us tonight, Mr. CJ McClung, so let's welcome them up and get a photo. Michael Jung, let's go ahead and have our campus leader join, great representative of one of the organizations on your campus. Great honor for a lot of hard work.
Next in our recognitions, we'll recognize our swim team. I'd like to call Mr. Neil Weaver, Athletic Director, to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Dr. Terry, members of the board, it is always a pleasure to recognize outstanding students in our athletic programs, and I am blessed for the third time, as a matter of fact, this spring, to be able to recognize members of this program. First off, I'll ask Coach Jason Thompson and Coach Cassie Thompson to come up and help me recognize them. We recognize members of the swim team for participating at the state level this spring. We've recognized members of the swim team for being academic all-state, and we have two more even higher levels of superlatives to recognize this evening. First, swimmer Mia Clarizio has been named the National Intercollegiate Swim Coaches Association Academic All-American. And both the boys' team and the girls' team from Forney High School have been named National Intercollegiate Swim Coaches Association Gold Level National Team, Scholar Team, sorry, Gold Level National Scholar Team. So quite an additional accomplishment for these teams.
We're going to take a five-minute recess now. Parents, if you want to slip out this time, that's fine. Thank you for coming. We'll continue on now with item number nine, our reports. This time, we've got two items, and we'll start one with nine A is our monthly financial report, and then we'll transition to B, and Ms. Morzak will be on deck. Ready, John?
Thanks, Ove.
John Chase.
Can you hear me? Just to start off with tonight, our financial report, this is through the month of April, and beginning with general fund revenues, the year-to-date revenue collections were 103.8 million. This is 80% of the amount of estimated revenue for the year, and as a comparison from the prior year, we were at 79% collected, so very, very close to where we expect to be this time of year for revenue collections. As far as expenditures, we had 113.6 million to date, and that's 81% of the amount appropriated. Prior year, we had 77%, and just like in the last four or five meetings that we've talked about, our percentage expended at this time, it's -- we're funding some construction projects through our general funds a little more than we did last year, and we're about 4% of that differential is related to that. So feel really good where we're at expenditure-wise in our general fund. As far as food service revenues, year-to-date collections here was 6.3 million. In the month of April, we actually, the only collection we had for April was 240,000 for additional supply chain assistance. The April reimbursement for food claims, we didn't actually get until May, so we'll report that next month, but the federal government did appropriate some additional funds to help us with supply chain problems and price increases and whatnot, which is certainly a welcome receipt of funds. As far as free lunches goes for the month, we served 143,000, and just like in the last few months, we discussed this, this is about 50% of the amount of our student body that's actually taking advantage of our free lunch program. All the cart sales we had is 145,000 for the month, and prior year revenue recognition was at 52% compared to 95% in the current year. So looking really good in our food service revenue. As far as expenses go, year-to-date, we're at 4.7 million, which is 72% of the amount appropriated, and last year, we were about 69%. So again, we're doing really well here as well. In fact, we're going to have some surplus funds to help us buy some equipment and things like that, that I know we've got some combination ovens and a few things like that that Kim and her team's working on getting purchased this time. So and then it's just, lastly, I'm not giving a debt service report this month, just like in the last couple of months, we were 100% expended and received for debt service, so there's really nothing additional to report, but cash and investments on hand at the end of April, total $280 million, a little over, most of which was our capital project fund balance. We sold bonds in the month of February, 165 million, and the bulk of those funds are still, along with what we had remaining from the last sale that we did, but we're burning through those funds at a fairly, pretty good clip, you know, with the steel and concrete purchases that we've had the last month or two, and so those balances will certainly be coming down. But that's the financial report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
President Ferris, I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Hey, John, I know the child nutrition revenue has been helped by the federal grant, federal meals grant. Is that going to continue possibly for next year? Do you know?
Repeat the question. I'm not quite sure if you understood what you said.
I know the child nutrition revenue has been helped by the federal grant, meals grant this year. Is it, is there a chance or possibility that it'll continue for next year?
We're not going to, we're not going to be able to serve free lunches to every kid next year, no, sir. In fact, we probably, in the month of June, will be bringing some information to you about setting meal prices for next year. That program where they allowed us to serve free lunches to everybody will be expiring this year, yes, sir.
Okay.
So just the folks that actually normally qualify for free lunches or reduced-price lunches would get that benefit for next year.
It was a blessing to many while it lasted. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Chase. Moving on to item B, master plan update, Ms. Kim Morzak and guests.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I actually have two guests tonight. I'm going to start with Mr. Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction. He's going to give you the current update on our current projects, and then I'm going to talk a little bit, and then I'll introduce our next special guest. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, good to be with you again, as always. While John was giving that report, I was wondering if maybe the federal government might help the district out with some supply chain cost on construction materials. So I thought that'd be a good idea, but anyway, just to go through these statuses on the existing projects real quick, this is kind of an odd time for us with these status reports because we've got some projects finishing and some projects starting, and none really in the middle, so it'll go pretty quick. Johnson is going along real well. Most or part of the punch list is completed and being completed. I think they're planning on walking the rest of the interior punch list within the next two weeks and working that stuff off, and then the exterior punch list should happen in about mid-June is what we're thinking on the completion on the canopies and the landscaping, irrigation, things like that. But that building, if you've been in there, it looks phenomenal. It's a really pretty building, as well as Willet, which is basically in the same shape. That's still Johnson, yep. Willet is a little bit further along on the exterior than Johnson is. We expect that exterior punch list also to be done about the middle of June, and the interior punch list, again, are progressing along, and they've got a couple of areas left to do. I think they're walking a punch tomorrow on Areas Two and Three, so the interior will be finishing up as well. That's another picture of Willet. You can see the patio up top and the gymnasium, storm shelter, the front entry. The OC is coming along very well. We've got the site work being completed, underground storm sewer and sanitary sewer, the underground water and electrical installations all in progress, paving is in progress. We've started going vertical on some of the concrete masonry walls around the arena. That's the scaffolding that you can see up on the side there, and again, grade beams you can see on the lower right-hand corner, the CMU wall is actually going up as part of the arena walls. Elementary school number 10 is just getting started. We've moved vegetation out of the way, started preparing the building pad, and are working on grading the parking lots. The rain that we had night before last did slow us up a little bit, so we're out there pumping a little water right now, but soon as that gets dried back up, we'll be started, getting started on underground utilities on that side as well. And then the paving addition over at Forney High School, grading's being done, just some of the prep work, getting the landscaping irrigation, or irrigation rerouted, getting the curb cuts done, getting ready to make the expanded connection onto College Street over the summer so that it's done before school starts back and get that parking lot. That parking lot should go fairly quickly as long as we don't have any adverse weather that affects us. So that completes the status report. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
I just wanted to ask one question on both the Johnson and Willet budget numbers. It looks like we've still got about a million or a little over in contingency on both projects.
Yes, sir.
Is that looking like it's going to hold, that we're not going to spend?
It will, yeah. We're, you know, those, we carried basically the same contingencies in those projects as we did at Griffin Elementary, and we really, since we'd already built Griffin, all the changes that were made during Griffin, which weren't a lot, but there were some, those got incorporated into Willet and Johnson, so, yeah, we didn't have to really touch much of those contingency funds at all, and we expect the same thing on Elementary 10. We actually didn't carry as much contingency in Elementary 10 because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I'll just add a couple of things. Dr. Terry visited Johnson yesterday, and I think the teachers were a little bit sad that that building, some of them have been there for a really long time, so he had me arrange today the Johnson teachers got to go walk the new Johnson and see the inside. It's far enough along they can really see what that school looks like, so that was a big treat for them, and it is beautiful. So we're punching the inside of that tomorrow. It's real close to being done. And the other thing, these pictures didn't quite show that block wall on the first floor, but if you drive by the OC, you'll be able to see where that arena is. It doesn't look too big from the road, but when you stand in the middle of it, it is huge. So just as you get your bearings when you drive by, that is the exterior first-floor walls of the arena that are going up that you can see from the road. So they're doing a great job as always. Dr. Terry?
Ms. Morzak, will you also, I think we have some scaffolding up over at Citibank. Would you just address that?
Yes, sir. Part of, one of our summer projects that we have going on, we have the air conditioners at Claybon that will be happening this summer, the track at Brown, so you'll be seeing that, and then we're painting the exterior and updating the logo on the outside of Citibank. So there's scaffolding up, they've already started the interior painting, so they'll be working on that this summer to get that refresh done. Other summer projects are just some paint and carpet, Henderson and Blackburn, and we started that today. So all the summer maintenance projects are in full swing, and we're going as fast as we can to get, to get through all that. There's a lot going on, a lot going on. Just as a reminder, we're finishing out the 2019 bond, and we're going to kind of go through a few of the projects with you tonight. I have Kate Dunphy from Huckabee Architects here. She's going to talk to you about the middle school additions, but I just want to remind you that North Forney and Forney High School ninth-grade centers, and I'll show you those master plans in a second, Phase One and Phase Two will be completed through that 2019 bond. Elementary number 10, that Jeff just told you, I think we're permitted to start, so that's really going to start ramping up out there at the North Forney site. Transportation facility expansion, that's on the other side of North Forney, that will be underway, and then the Ray intermediate expansion that we'll show you here in just a second, those are all 2019 bond program buildings that will finish out the 2019 bond. We also, thanks to our amazing, amazing families and parents who voted for the 2020 bond, are able to start some of those projects as well. And that's middle school number four, the Warren Middle School replacement, which is really going to be intermediate school number four, kind of, you know, how we like to shift things around. Elementary school 11, which we're going to start design on, and then land acquisition, and Kate and I will kind of walk you through those projects. Just as a reminder, this is North Forney High School. It shows that expansion to transportation out here. Elementary 10's way off the page, out this way. This is the ninth-grade center here, and then the Phase Two kind of encumbers the rest of that picture. Forney High School, as you know, we're moving those tennis courts. Here's their ninth-grade expansion, kind of is backed by the cafeteria, and really the rest of the master plan for Phase Two is to provide equitable, equitable facilities for each of the two campuses. They won't be the same, but they will be equitable. So that's that site plan for Forney High School. This is Ray, and so Ray, right now, holds about 1,000 students. It's going to be paired with a new middle school, and so we need to hold a capacity of 1,200 students. This addition is a storm shelter gym. They really need two gyms at the size they are, and a little fine arts addition, and then a little bump of the cafeteria. So you see it on the bottom left there, it's kind of outlined. That's going to be starting, what?
Construction.
Construction.
Spring of next year.
Spring of next year. So that is the Ray intermediate expansion, and I'm going to turn it over to Kate, and she's going to kind of walk you through the middle school expansion. This is just a rendering showing you, if you drive into Ray towards the back where that Claychee parking lot is right now, that's looking into the cafeteria, and that expansion will go right there on the side. So it's going to look really nice, and that'll be a true 1,200 school at that point. Kate?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry. I'm just at the board. So this will start conversations about 22 bond projects, 2022 bond projects. So the first projects right out of the gate are two new middle schools, two designs at the same time, same building design, two different sites. I think we're used to that at this point. The first site that we'll talk about is adjacent to Henderson Elementary School, and you can see, let's see this mousework, the building footprint that will sit just southeast of Henderson as you know it. We'll have a new parent drive coming off of 1641, and we've been working closely with our civil engineer and tech staff to learn about future plans for 1641 and how that's going to impact traffic flow. You can see we've got new parent drives to address some of the stacking issues that are going on at Henderson, and so I think we've got everybody pretty well spread out around this site from pre-K drop-off to elementary drop-off and middle school drop-off. Parents will come in, and at this point, parent drop-off will be up here on the north side of the middle school, and parent drop-off will move to the backside of Henderson. And then buses will stay at the front, and visitor entry will stay at the front sides of both Henderson and the new middle school. Both new middle schools have an interior courtyard and an outer courtyard. The outer courtyard is connected to the hub and the cafeteria, which we'll look at a little more closely when we look at the plan, and the inner courtyard is surrounded by the academic wing, also connected to the hub, so students will be able to expand out learning environment out in this area and a little shaded by the building. Henderson site will also get a new practice field, so it'll have that, the same facilities from a middle school standpoint. And then if we look at the Warren site, you'll see the same building footprint tucked just behind Warren and Jack Rabbit as it is now. You'll see the transportation facility will no longer be here. That's part of why we're renovating and building on at the new transportation facility at North, and so this building will go in its place. Connected this, the shelter for this middle school will actually be the shelter that serves both Warren and the new, or future intermediate four, and the new Warren Middle School. And you can see we're taking parents back this direction to the athletic entry over here. What we've done design-wise to pull parent traffic here off of Bodark, we've got about quadruple the amount of stacking around this space is what we're currently seeing at the Warren site, so we should be able to handle all of that parent traffic for pickup and drop-off. Similar to Henderson, bus and visitor entries will stay at this end of the building, so your main office, front entries are all right here. Similarly, you see the courtyards, inner courtyard and outer courtyard for the middle school. This facility will use Jack Rabbit Stadium, which is part of a future renovation, as its practice its practice and competition field. Any questions on the site plan that I can address? Wonderful. Okay, so we'll only look at one floor plan, and so what we're seeing, this is that north side of the building where you have your visitor entry and your bus drop-off. Guests will enter through the front door, the controlled vestibule, straight into the admin area where they can check in. Students and teachers can enter this area for bus drop-off as well. Where students get dropped off, it'll drop them right into this academic corridor. Academics all around here on the right side of the plan. To the right, this is a two-story academic wing, so it matches first to second floor. As you proceed further into the building, you've got the hub, space that we've all come to love, flanked on either sides by classrooms, and then you can see the connection there of that inner courtyard, straight through to that outer courtyard. All that, I think, is gonna be really nice. We work on some renderings to show you how that's gonna come together. Further south, you have your fine arts wing, come down here, starting with theater, cafeteria and dining, all connected to each other. And then if you recognize at all, this is the same athletic portion of the building from Rhodes and Jackson, and this is where the shelter is going to live. So, we've got the big competition gym, and then the smaller practice gym, and then all the same locker room facilities back here. This node, which is your concessions and lobby and ticket entry, will address the athletic fields for both sites as well. You can see the second floor matches that first floor, and it's a nice overlook here over this learning stair that looks straight out into that hub space, and again, the connection to both of those courtyards. And then we're starting to look at what our new entry is gonna look like, just a sneak peek of some 3D images. This will be that bus entry and visitor main entrance right here. Any questions? Wonderful. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Kate. That does conclude the master planning report at this time.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Terry, any comments?
Just excited about, again, as Kim said, the ability to continue to move forward with these projects. What you see with these middle schools is both of those are projected to open in 2024. I'm not sure if we mentioned that or not tonight, but the, we're already gonna be fighting timeframes on these, just to get them open by that time, so we appreciate the community, but as well as our board, to go ahead and get some of these designs started early to get us moving. So, what you saw tonight, both the 19, concluding the 19 bond, as well as some of these new projects in 22 are related to the parameter action item, parameter sale action item that you'll see moving forward. Those projects will be inclusive of that recommendation that we'll have later on the agenda. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I hear none, then we'll move on then. Item 10 is public forum. We have no one signed up to address the board. Moving on to item 11, consent agenda. 11A is approved minutes for the May 9th regular meeting. 11B approved minutes from the May 18th special call meeting. 11C approved the budget amendment. 11D approved contract for security guards. 11E approved amendments to the 22, 23 student code of conduct. And 11F approved Title I designation and personnel for 22 and 23 school year. The board may take action on each of them separately or collectively. Do I hear a motion?
Ferris, I move that we approve the consent agenda, but like what we asked presented, including specifically item E, the student code of conduct, as presented in the regulation.
I have a motion from Mr. Johnson to approve them collectively, specifically including item E, approve the student code of conduct as presented in closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12, consideration of possible approval to rescind the remaining authorized but unissued bonds under the order passed on November 8, 2021. Mr. John Chase, chief financial officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Just by way of review, as the board is aware, back in November, we approved a parameter order totaling $280 million to construct the opportunity central, as well as a few other projects in the district. And to date, we've issued 165.5 million of that, of that authorization, which leaves us 114.5 million. Now that the May bond election is passed, and to start construction on these projects that were presented to you in the master plan, what we would like to do is rescind that order and actually approve a new parameter order that would allow us to issue 290.9 million dollars. 193.3 of that would be related to the November 2019 bond election, and the remaining 97.6 would be related to this May election that we just had. So, this, this order, again, just like other orders, it would grant myself or the superintendent the authority to execute the sale, and we would have to make sure that the true interest cost of the deal would be less than 6%, not to exceed 6%. It also would give us the authorization to refinance callable debt. Right now, we've got $9.3 million of callable debt. As long as we can refinance that at a present value savings, net present value savings at 3%, if it meets that, that parameter, then we could execute that sale as well. So, long story short, I mean, I know this is really kind of wrapping two, two agenda items in one, but on the first, first action item, I think we just bears, just reporting all this at once, so maybe you could take action on both items. But the first item, we would recommend rescinding the parameter order that's outstanding currently, and that's our recommendation.
Thank you. You've heard the presentation for item number 12. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, what is your recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I recommend we approve, or I'm sorry, rescind the remaining authority as presented by Mr. Chase.
Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board adopt an order authorizing the issuance of 20 independent school district unlimited tax school building and refunding bonds in one or more series by delegated sale.
I have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 13 then. Consideration and approval of an order to authorize the issuance of the Forney Independent School District of its unlimited tax school bond building and refunding bonds in one or more series, levying a continuing direct and annual average of tax for the payment of one or more series of bonds, prescribing the form, terms, conditions, and revolving other matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, and delivery of one or more series of bonds, including the approval and distribution of one or more official statements pertaining thereto authorizing execution of one or more paying agents, registrars, agreements, and purchase contracts, each pertaining to a series of bonds complying with letter of representation on file with deposit or re-trust. Delegating authority to certain members of the board trustees and direct staff to approve and execute certain documents relating to the sale of each series of bonds and providing an effective date. Mr. John Chase, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I've pretty much given you the background in the, in the prior action item, that we would basically recommend that you authorize the, myself or Justin, to, to issue 290.9 million dollars of, of a bond under the parameters that I had outlined before, and that's our recommendation.
I need to pause right there, Mr. Chase. We need to back up to item number 12 to clarify some notes there. On, on item number 12, Mr. Johnson, would you like to restate your motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Ferris, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I would move that the board rescind the remaining authorized but unissued bonds under the order passed in November 8, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second again?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Now, let's move forward to number 13, now that we've got that one correct. You've heard the presentation from Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, do you have any other comments?
No, sir. This is just an exciting time again for Forney to continue to move forward with building and keeping up and managing the growth. And just to remind everybody, the parameter order that you are seeing today is just the authorization for us to look for a sale in the future, and giving administration that authority to begin to issue those bonds and continue to build these projects. With the issuance of this bond, just, or these, or sale of these bonds, just a reminder that we will not have a tax rate increase from this bond sale this year, so just wanted to remind you, as well as the public, that this will not increase the tax, the tax rate as we discussed and educated throughout the bond process. But we would recommend approving the parameter order as presented this evening.
You've heard from the administration. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board of trustees adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Forney Independent School District unlimited tax school building and/or refunding bonds in one or more series by delegated sale.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No, here none. Thank you very much, Mr. Chase. Moving on to item number 14 then, consideration of possible approval to grant the authority to the superintendent to, for the lease of modular buildings. Ms. Morzak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you guys know, we've, we've talked a lot about our unprecedented growth here in Forney. And Jeff and Kate and I presented a lot of buildings that we're building, building them as fast as we can, but the kids are coming as fast as they can. And so, in order to ensure that we have ample instructional space for our students, we would like to lease a few campus makers, a few additional campus makers, just to ensure that we have the right instructional spaces for our students. We would like the, the board to grant Dr. Terry the authority to negotiate the purchase of those, not to exceed 1.1 million dollars. I'm sorry, lease, I apologize, not purchase, lease. These are temporary. We don't want anything permanent, so this will be a lease. I apologize.
Ms. Morzak, thank you very much. Dr. Terry, do you have any further comments?
I would just appreciate the authority to get ahead of this. Any, any building of anything right now is taking a while, and so having some flexibility, we appreciate from the board to make sure that we can manage the seats, the kids that we are, we do have coming in while the buildings are being built. But again, to clarify, if we do move forward, this, this would be a temporary solution.
Are any other questions from the board? I hear none. Do I have a motion to grant approval for the authority of superintendent for the leasing of modular buildings to meet the growth demands?
Mr. Ferris, I move to grant authority to the superintendent for the possible lease of modular buildings and not to exceed 1.1 million dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second? Who was that? Thank you, Ms. Bateman. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Number 15, closed session, was taken out of order earlier, then we're moving on to item 16, consideration of possible approval of resolution regarding the sale of approximately 1.366 acres of real property at FM 1641 Kaufman, Texas, Forney, in Kaufman County, Texas, in the survey and abstract 203 to the state of Texas, acting by and through the Texas Department of Transportation, contingent on approval of the Forney SD counter offer. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I'm just gonna take a minute, but I'd make a motion that the board approved the resolution as presented, that the board trustees authorize the superintendent to obtain an appraisal of property, submit a counter offer, and negotiate agreements with the state as discussed in the session regarding the possible sale of property. That contingent on the state's acceptance of the counter offer, if the board trustees agrees to sell property to the state for a price which is equal to or greater than the fair market value as determined by the appraisal obtained by the district. That the board trustees authorize the president of the board trustees to execute deed possession in this agreement, and other documents necessary to effect the claims of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. On number 17, consideration of possible approval regarding ratification of employment of professional contract personnel. Is there a motion from the board?
Ferris, I move to approve the ratification of employment personnel as discussed in the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. May I have a second? Mr. Regan? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item, number 18, we got announcements. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. A big announcement for tonight. We're doing great here, so I think we're gonna make it by the third inning over to the Forney High School playoff game this evening over at Forney High School is the first announcement. But just a reminder to you that we will have our late-June meeting, that is really our July meeting, on June 27th, and that will be our budget meeting, budget adoption meeting at that time. And then we've got summer to look forward to, so outside of that, there's a few back-to-school dates that we've got in place, and possible team-of-eight discussions as we move forward as well throughout the summer. So, that's our announcements for this evening.
Please take note of all the dates listed there. If you have any conflicts, let the office know. Is there anything else from the board? Okay, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:51 PM. Thank you all for attending.